Good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting to board. We're going to the City Council meeting for September 16th, 2025, at this time.
I'll turn my mic on. At this time, can we all stand for our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united we got, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Brando Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Lamatina.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph.
Here.
Mayor Pierre Washington.
Here.
Thank you.
Right now, we'll do a report on closed session confirmation and reportable action. Ms. Highsmith?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session this evening with legal counsel to discuss one matter of potential or anticipated litigation. No action was taken, but direction was given to legal counsel and staff. And there wasn't time on the agenda this evening to get to the second item, so that will be continued, possibly to later this evening, or possibly for another date. It's up to the council.
Thank you. Moving forward, we have proclamations and presentation. Tonight, we have one presentation and two proclamations. We will start with item number three, a presentation by the community action Napa Valley. Do we have a presenter?
Squeeze in here. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Doug Hocker. I am the chair of Community Action Napa Valley Board of Directors, and we're here tonight to give you kind of a brief run-through of some of the services we offer, not just throughout the county, but also specifically here in American Canyon. We often shorten our name. It takes a while to say Community Action Napa Valley, so I may say CanV. That's our acronym. First, just a little history. Back in 1964, actually, Lyndon Johnson created the Economic Opportunity Act, and that created community action agencies across the country. Shortly thereafter, in 1965, Napa County leaders, governments, faith community, low-income individuals, created something called the Napa County Council on Economic Opportunity. So that was the beginning of, back in 1965, of what is now called Community Action Napa Valley. So for 60 years now, Community Action Napa Valley's mission has been to provide services and resources that promote healthy living and encourage self-sufficiency for the most vulnerable members of the community. Today, we operate the Food Bank Program. There's a couple of programs that sit under the umbrella of the Food Bank that we'll talk about tonight. The Meals on Wheels Program for homebound seniors, side program of that called Silver Fox Program, and Wellness on Wheels Program. And we also operate two licensed preschools for low-income students up in Napa. We're active in many local initiatives, the Nonprofit Coalition, Live Healthy Napa Valley, the Area Agency on Aging. We collaborate with a number of nonprofits. We're pretty engaged in the community. Leon, another member of our board that you're probably more familiar with than me, is going to talk just a little bit about some of the things that we do and some of the numbers.
Thank you, Doug. Leon Garcia, mayor retired. As one would say. Well, I've been on the Community Action Napa Valley Board for a number of years now, and certainly it's a mission that really resonates with me. You know, we help a lot of people in the community. This evening, I was able to, this on the table over here is a typical delivery, too, would be a family delivery. And I thought maybe a visual presentation would be something that, more tangible, you can actually, when you can see it and touch it, it has a little more meaning for you. The Food Bank provides various nutritious foods to low-income individuals, families, seniors, nonprofit organizations throughout Napa County. Our program includes emergency food pantries, silver fox box, USDA commodity program, nonprofit access. We do Meals on Wheels, for example. There may be dependent seniors who are not able to drive, so we do a home delivery for them. On average, the Food Bank contributes over 118,000 pounds of food per month. That's more than 110,000 meals annually. We are proud to be partner with agencies in an ongoing fight against hunger. This includes 60 nonprofits, 16 churches, six local governments, and many more to fulfill our objectives for better health outcome. Food Bank CanV distributes food to eight food pantries throughout Napa County, so that people and families can receive a bag of groceries and other emergency food assistance close to their own neighborhoods. These food pantries are open to help on different days of the week and various times during those days. Those, indeed, of food assistance can find various resources available. I know Vice Mayor Joseph with the Kiwanis Club of American Canyon have a weekly food distribution due on Thursdays.
Yes.
Supplied from CanV. CanV food pantries allow low-income residents of Napa County to receive an allotment of food from one of seven locations every 30 days. Allotments are based on household size, having consist of meat, dairy produce, and dry and canned food items. Our pantry, relatively new to us, is on Kaiser Road. If you know where DMV is, that road, it's the intersection is right into Community Action Napa Valley. There's a sign on it. The third Monday of the month, it's open for tours, and certainly as officials as a community or anyone who has an interest can certainly make arrangements to have a tour of it. It's like, what, 6,000 square feet?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So it's a huge operation in there. If you can imagine the amount of food items we have to secure. So this evening, when we have a break, probably between this meeting and your next one, just come over and check it out, see what we got over there. That would be very typical. And it's boxed up. The empty boxes are underneath the table, so it comes in that type of format for families to pick up. They can also come in and shop. There's a little section here that has items they want. I didn't include any dairy, but because we don't have, I don't have refrigeration for it, but they have dairy over there as well. So, and now Doug's going to fill you in on some more details.
Just a couple of things specific to the American Canyon community. In American Canyon, Leon referenced, we support two pantry sites. These pantries operate on a choice model, so individuals can come in and select food that they're interested in. And we serve approximately 150 individuals a month in those pantries. We offer two free market sites. Free market sites are a little more open and tend to have fresher produce, or more produce, I should say. There's two sites here in American Canyon, one at Las Casitas, one at the Catholic Church, and they serve approximately 200 individuals per month here in American Canyon. Additionally, we serve 75 individuals per month through our Meals on Wheels Program here in the American Canyon area, and 35 individuals per month through the Silver Fox Program. The Silver Fox Program is an additional box for qualified individuals that tends to have, again, more produce and more food that's ready to eat. It's not packaged food, it's fresh food. And through July this year, the Food Bank Program alone has distributed close to a million pounds of food across the county. And all of this is done with very little government funding, lots of donations, lots of great and generous volunteers. I will say, the need for food in Napa County is growing pretty noticeably. So if you think the number was large as far as poundage of food, you might be surprised to hear that that's continuing to go up. We intend to continue to serve the need to the greatest of our ability. We've been able to make it through thick and thin in the last 60 years, so we plan to continue services at least the current level, if not greater, both here in American Canyon and across the county. Thanks a lot for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Doug and Leon. And thank you both for what you do for the community.
Thank you for this evening. Appreciate it. While we may check out.
Yeah, when we have our break from the regular city council meeting and we move on to the Open Space Active Transportation Sustainability, we'll all announce that we'll have that little quick break.
Okay. Yeah, that's about the time Doug and I will pack that up, so we're not interrupting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you both. Next, we'll move to item number four, a proclamation for the National Community Planning Month. Do we have a recipient for that proclamation? Apparently, you'll be receiving that? Okay, so it's the National Community Planning Month for October 2025. I'll read the proclamation, and then we'll come up and take a photograph with you and allow you to have an opportunity to give some comments back to the community and to the council. National Community Planning Month, October 2025. Whereas communities across the nation, including the city of American Canyon, must adapt to change and to whereas community planning provides a framework to shape positive changes and inform choices about how we live, work, and enjoy life. Whereas proactive decisions-making helps decision-makers anticipate and overcome challenges, and whereas the planning process helps reconcile diverse and sometimes competing perspectives from all residents and businesses in the community. And whereas the community planning further economic development by guiding long-term infrastructure and public service's needs, and whereas a planning helps committee adopt and thrive in the face of environmental changes. And whereas community planning helps to align local government policies and actions with long-term goals. And whereas the American Planning Association designates October as National Community Planning Month to recognize and celebrate the contributions of sound planning across the United States. Now therefore, I, Pierre Washington, the mayor of American Canyon, along with the city council, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Community Planning Month in the city of American Canyon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Washington. Thank you, City Council, for this opportunity. You know, I've been an educator for 35 years. A few of you know me as the former principal of Donaldson Way, recently retired two years ago, and so proud to serve my community as an educator, particularly for elementary school-aged children. So it's quite an honor, again, to be selected to be a member of the American Canyon Planning Commission. I believe in learning. It's a big learning curve for me, but I also enjoy contributing, listening to people in our community, and making smart decisions for our lovely town. I'm a really proud member of our city, and thank you to all of you for your faith in me, and thank you to our community also. Please send me email, ask questions, stop me in the street. I don't have the answer, but I love to listen, and I'm a good learner. Thank you.
And I'm Brent Cooper, Community Development Director, and just wanted to say how proud I am of our Planning Commission, residents who devote their time to help this community, and having to read all the things that we send their way. Very complicated processes that our world requires, but it isn't just the Planning Commission, it's the city council, it's everyone in this room, it's the community. Because the plans that are made mean nothing if we don't follow through with them. And all of you are part of that process, as well as the Open Space Active Transportation Sustainability Commission, and everybody. So really, it helps us have a beautiful community that we enjoy today. So it's really, it's for everybody.
Thank you. We'll take a picture with you up here. Next, we'll have item number five, a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Month. And do we have our recipient? Welcome.
Thank you.
I'll read the proclamation, and again, I'll give you an opportunity to kind of share something afterwards. Suicide Prevention Month, September 2025. Whereas mental health is essential to the overall health and well-being of all people, and suicide is a tragic and preventable public health issue that affects individuals, families, workplaces, schools, and our entire community. And whereas many who consider suicide experience conditions that can be effectively treated, and increasing access to timely and cultural responses, support can save lives. And whereas stigma surrounding mental health conditions and help-seeking can discourage people from getting the care that they need. And whereas American Canyon is committed to fostering a community in which every person, across all ages, backgrounds, and identities, feel seen, valued, and supported, and where it is safe to ask for help. And whereas evidence-informed suicide prevention includes promoting mental wellness, training community members to recognize warning signs and respond, expanding access to crisis services, supporting survivors of suicide loss, reducing access to lethal means when someone is at risk, and strengthening protective factors such as connectedness, belonging, and hope. And whereas help is available 24/7 through the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline by calling and/or texting 988, and through local partners including Metis Napa, Napa County Centers for Mental Health, which provides counseling, prevention, and wellness programs for youth, adults, and families. And whereas during Suicide Prevention Month and throughout the year, residents of American Canyon are encouraged to learn the warning signs of suicide, have open and caring conversations and dialogue about mental health, share resources, and look out for one another. Now therefore, I, Mayor Pierre Washington, along with the City Council of American Canyon, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month in the city of American Canyon, and call upon all residents, schools, faith communities, businesses, and organizations to join in activities and practices that promote mental wellness, reduce stigma, support survivors, and connect people to help and to hope. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Washington and city council members, for your acknowledgement of Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. My name is Jenny Olson, and I am the chair of the Napa County Suicide Prevention Council. And over the past 10 months or so, we have been working with Napa County Epidemiologist Team to really understand the local and national statistics and data around suicide prevention in order to inform our continued work on the council. And we have identified, we have hard data that shows the three most vulnerable populations in Napa County that are at risk of suicide are older adults, veterans, and LGBTQ youth. So we have designed this year's annual Suicide Prevention Conference, which is tomorrow. There is still space, if anybody wants to join us at a conference, it's being held in Yountville at the Community Center. We have a breakout focused on identifying and building protective factors for older adults, the same type of breakout focused on veterans. We have a two-hour live virtual training, ally training by the Trevor Project, which is a national organization focused on reducing suicides in our LGBTQ youth. And then we have a keynote speaker by city council member Lisa Gift from Calistoga City Council. She's going to share her lived experience and personal story around suicide ideation and how she's weaving that story and that lived experience into her policy work on the city council. So again, I'll leave flyers with you in case anybody is available tomorrow. The conference is happening from 2:45 until 8:30 PM. You could join part or all of the conference. There also will be resources available for anyone who needs support. And I hope some of you can join us. And again, I want to share that suicide does not discriminate. People of every age, race, ethnicity, gender, and ability can be at risk. And as Mayor Washington pointed out in the proclamation, it is really important that we continue reaching out to our most vulnerable populations to offer support and to train ourselves to recognize the signs of suicide and intervene. Thank you again, your acknowledgement and awareness around this issue is really appreciated.
Thank you, Jenny. At this time, I'd like to move on to public comment for comments for any items that are not on tonight's agenda. So it's open. And Madam Clerk, do we have any cards?
Yes. We have no written public comment for open session this evening. I do have some speaker cards and hands raised online. So I'm going to start with Barry Christian.
Good evening, Barry.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, City Council. I would like to respectfully request two large temporary warning signs be posted on Green Island Road from Commerce Way to Devlin Road until the proposed Class 1 trail running along the north side of Green Island Road can be constructed. This Class 1 trail was first proposed by city staff back when Creighton Wright was Park's director. Although I don't know whether Creighton was involved, it was Jason Holly's team that proposed it. I think it's a great idea from city staff. Congratulations to them. It placed us in the lead on these issues. However, due to numerous delays outside the city's control, the trail has yet to be constructed. But in the meantime, city of Vallejo completed their entire sections of Vine Trail and Bay Trail from Vallejo Ferry to American Canyon. And folks are arriving by ferryboat attempting to use these trails. I've spoken with some of them, and there will only be more and more traffic as these regional trails get closer to completion. And because the Vine Trail route on the east side of American Canyon hits a dead end at Watson Ranch and can't go any further north, the default bike route through American Canyon is now the San Francisco Bay Trail on the west side of the city, running along Wetlands Edge Road, going through the Eucalyptus Grove, then utilizing Green Island Road to get to Devlin, where there's a safe Class 1 further north. This one-third mile section on Green Island Road is dangerous to bicycles, in my opinion, and the opinion of other bicycles I've talked to. The road is very narrow in places. There are no sidewalks, not even shoulders, just a curb. And you can't even navigate the uneven landscape along the side of the road. So there's nowhere for bicycles or pedestrian to escape the large trucks. Former Public Works Director Robert Wheel once told us Green Island Road is not appropriate for bicycles, and I agree. Vine Trail founder and chairman Chuck McMinn has said, "Whether you love bicycles or whether you hate bicycles, we all agree they need to be separated." Unfortunately, in this instance, at least until the Class 1 trail is constructed, we're faced with a situation where bicyclists and vehicles will be sharing 500 yards of narrow roadway. The question for me is, how can we make that situation safer? I believe large signs placed by city public works will make it clear to vehicle traffic, that bicycles have a right to share this section of road, and that vehicle traffic has an obligation to drive safely. I think this will help. I'm not sure what else we can do, but I believe we have an obligation to do what we can. I don't think it'll hurt to place some signs. I don't think it'll be that expensive, and maybe it saves a life, at least until we can complete the Class 1 trail. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Barry.
Jeanette Gojich.
Good evening, Mayor Washington, city council members, and members of the public. My name is Jeanette Gojich, longtime resident of American Canyon. During the April meeting of LAFCO, it was decided that American Canyon would add the 157-acre property of 1661 Green Island Road to American Canyon's Sphere of Influence, rather than keep it in the unincorporated Napa County. Then in March, the American Canyon City Council voted to support the decision of LAFCO. The property there is owned by David Galbraith, who claimed the land was no longer useful for agriculture, and therefore he has tried to sell the land to American Canyon. For what, I ask. Could it be development of recreational facilities, workforce housing, businesses? Could it be that the land may still be used for agriculture? In 2017, it is reported that Green Island Vineyards boasted a prized Pinot Noir. I'm not sure if I said that right, but some fancy wine. The cost of development to the area that butts up against the wetlands will come in many forms, the loss of wildlife, many of which are endangered. Pouring cement over these habitats without listening to the environmentalists and scientists first is heartbreaking. When the king tides happen, the homes of the workers are flooded or the soccer fields flooded and unusable. Who will then care? Or if warehouses are built to store recreation equipment, this will be considered okay within the definition, as I understand it, of open space. American Canyon citizens do not want more warehouses. As I understand, the Sphere of Influence does not approve or allow any development. For the development to occur, there needs to be additional steps, including annexation into the city. My request is to have this property used as a habitat conservation land. We, as a city, need to find creative ways to make this happen, perhaps through fundraising, grants, or the generosity of those who have the ability and funds to donate to a worthy cause, saving the wetlands. In my view, I believe the first step should be to have unbiased environmental scientists to study the property and speak of the importance of this very important wetlands. As of today, 80% of the Bay Area wetlands have disappeared. We in American Canyon have the unique and ever-important opportunity to save one of the last pieces of wetlands here in American Canyon. To be clear, I'm not against businesses. I am for businesses that take into account the interests of the people and respect for the environment. I hope to never hear a spokesperson for the business community speak at a public forum and say, "To hell with environmentalists," as I did at a city council meeting about one and a half years ago. We can and should work together. And I just want to give a shout-out to the Audubon Society and to Kathleen Bit who spoke at the... want to give a shout out to the Audubon Society and to Kathleen Bit, who spoke at the last city council meeting. I thought it was phenomenal what they said about what wetlands, the importance of wetlands. And also Kathleen spoke of the rising water. Anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jeanette.
Hugh Marquez.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Hugh Marquez. And I just wanted to comment on the Rio de Mar construction. I want to thank Erica and the Public Works for getting that stuff done. It's looking nice. I know it took a long time, but I just want to comment. It's looking very nice. And once the lines are going, it's looking really good. The other thing is, is I wanted, last year, we talked about, the council talked about putting covers over the parks. And I want to thank you for I hear that the Northampton Park is going to get coverings in some of our other parks. And I think it's good. We have hot weather, and I think it's good that we are now providing shade to our parks, where at one point, we didn't think about that. The other thing I'd like to talk about is we have, is the recycled water distribution cycle. And I know, I was on the actual, the committee that was on that. And I'm trying to find out, I'm hoping that the city or Public Works or whoever's in charge has been looking for places and are looking for constructive places to start recycled water. This year was a very mild year. It wasn't 100-degree weather like we've had many other years, where we needed, and I actually use recycled water to water the front. When the city started recycled water, we had trucks. They came around and they dropped off at tanks. And then we got depots to do it. And the two that we had are now gone. We have the EcoCenter and the Public Works, the water treatment plant is no longer available to use. And so I come to the council and to Public Works to start looking, to start thinking about, so for next year, we have something, in case we have hot weather, people will not have to use regular water, because regular water is needed for drinking and other things. And so I come to ask the council and Public Works to start looking into that. The last thing is, as many of you know, I am, I am the wall volunteer coordinator. And I want to let the council know that we are doing very well on getting volunteers. We can always use more. I want to thank the mayor. I got a text from a friend of the mayor asking what they could do. And I hope the council will pass the word. You can have them contact me. My number is available. You all have my number. You can have them contact me, or you can have them contact the city. I'm really pushing everything to the city now, because we're getting close. And so I'm trying to get everything to go through the city channels versus me. I was the initial. But I just want to say that it's a wonderful event, and everybody I've talked to seems to be ready for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Hugh.
That's my last speaker card. I do have a hand raised online when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and Mayor Washington, and Melissa. A lot of people will comment about Mary Ann from Don's Way. I think she's doing great work as a senior sit on the board member. One thing I want to make sure, I think probably good for me listed is, we need to, need a sidewalk on West Karen Stone. And I don't know that that house is, be building. That's my comment. Thank you.
Justin, we're working on our value. We couldn't hear your statement. So give us a second. We can see if we could make the arrangement so we could hear the question that you had.
My question is about West Karen Stone. Will be a new housing on the hill, but we need to build a house and more, we need to put a new sidewalk in there.
I think you're asking about, you said four lots, it's four lots and open field. We will get back to you on that, on that question. I think that's the question that you were asking.
Yes, that is correct.
But thanks for bringing that to our attention, Justin.
Justin, if you're still there, if you could make your comment one more time, we think we might have resolved our issue.
Yes. Can you hear me?
We hear you better.
A little better. Talk as loud as you can.
Okay, let's try again. Yes, West Karen Stone more is east, east side of my house. You see a church by the hill. There's no housing on there. I know somebody that told me that somebody did not pay, there's no money to build a house. It's very difficult because I need, we're probably need to build a new sidewalk in there.
Thank you for your statement, or your comment, Justin. And we'll probably have somebody reach out to you about that concern. I think we do have some answers to that.
Thank you.
Any other person online?
No one else is online.
Okay, I'll close public comment. And I will, I'll move to agenda changes. And I'll accept a motion to accept the consent calendar if there are no items that anyone wants to pull off.
If there aren't any, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a second, Madam Clerk. Can we have a roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Washington.
Yes. Okay, we'll move to public hearing. We actually do not have any items on public hearing. Move on to business items. We have one business item, item number 10, contract award for the Synagro Water Reclamation Facility Sludge Hauling and Bio Solids Project, WW-26-0400. Looks like we have Norman Woods coming up to present.
I'm also gonna, oh, excuse me. Norman Woods is the Public Works Director. I'm also going to bring a chief plant operator, Nolan Garcia, Environmental Services Manager, Pam Phillips, who are a part of this as well. I was actually doing good going down this time, guys. See if you're going to come up here and lift it up, Ally. So specifically, as it relates to this particular business item, this has to do with, there are two large ponds at the water reclamation facility. Those two ponds are filled with bio solids. Those ponds are approximately probably about 600 dry tons full, somewhere around there, for a total of 1,200 dry tons. The initial project was about $1.1 million to get those hauled out of here. These ponds are getting hauled out annually every eight to 10 years, somewhere around there. How often are they being hauled out?
Yeah, we haven't done it since 2013.
Okay, so they haven't done it since 2013. The ponds are now full, so it's a capacity issue. In addition, there's a new law, unfunded state law that passed in 2016, SB 1383, that says that we have to comply with getting these hauled out. That $1.1 million price tag is now increased to a higher number because of power costs that have to do with fueling, disposal, power, all the things that are associated with hauling a very heavy bio product, bio solid product somewhere at another location. So moving forward with that project, we've had to amend the initial cost of it. We decided that we're going to break the project in half. So instead of trying to pay $1.1 million right now of this unfunded SB 1383 to comply with it, which we have to do, we're going to do half a, half of each of the ponds a year. So over the next four years, we're going to go ahead and pay the $600,000 price tag. So if you look at your supplemental package, that's what you see now. It's, the total project if we were to do it right now would be, I guess it'd be more than $1.1 million now. I think it'd probably be about $1.2 or $1.3 million. But we're going to go ahead and do half of it now, do the other half next summer, then do another half, and then another half. And so that would complete and put us in compliance with SB 1383 and remove all those bio solids from the water reclamation facility. That's the long and short end of it.
Okay. Quick question. Are you free to say where that gets transported to, or is that?
Synagro has their own contracts for where it goes. They have land application contracts in Sacramento. So SACSOAR would probably take some of that, which is also Echo Water for land application. They're Class B bio solids, so they're able to be land applied, so they're not going to go over to a landfill. So we're able to take them somewhere and get beneficial use out of them.
Okay, thank you, Norman. And thanks for that information. And I'll open up for questions from the council or concerns. Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes, thank you. So in reading the report, it sounds like it's, we're handling it in thirds. So this is the first third, and that's the 620?
In halves, yes. So initially, trying to do one huge pond would have been, actually, now that you think about it, talking with Nolan, I think I misspoke, the total project for one pond would have been $1.1 million. To do two ponds would have been, three, two?
Yeah, the middle pond is more like a three.
More like a $3 million project. So the first pond alone was going to be $1.1 million. Then we're going to have to retool and then get ready for the middle pond and pull the middle pond out. And that would have probably been another, or as, according to Nolan, probably been another $1.5 million, somewhere around there. So in total, it's a $3, $4 million project.
Okay, so the 620 is just for the first one-third of our first pond?
Correct.
So next year, 620 plus whatever.
Whatever the costs are next year, which, speaking with the finance director, we were trying to get, quite possibly get a quote earlier in the year, maybe in February 2026, but I don't think it would hold that long, because they only honor quotes for so, so long, so.
Okay. Well, that was one of my questions for the city manager was, is 620 the total cost, or 620 just for the first installment? Now we know the answer. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, I'll, Councilmember Cruz.
Norm had a question about the bid. So we have $330,000, one was 610. It looks like we're going with Synagro. How did you guys differentiate with that? How did you guys choose the particular bids for that, this project?
Well, having the team here, who are actually, Pam and Nolan both are part of that team, we went lowest cost, as well as the duties that they were able to do. Synagro House has an excellent reputation industry-wide to be able to deliver the service that we need. And they did have the best cost to go with it. So that was a big factor in it. But their scope of work and their plan for executing the work is also pretty solid. Nolan has a track history, a successful one of working with them. I have a successful history of working with them. So the thing is, at the price and understanding that, industry-wise, that they can deliver on what they said they can do. And also knowing that they have the contracts in place to deliver the bio solids where they need to be, and they're not going to go be land applied, so.
Thank you, Norm. Yeah, I've been out there and I've seen this much. So thank you for what you do. Thanks.
Okay, at this time, I'll open it up to public comment, if there's any, on item number 10.
I have no cards. No hands are raised online, but it looks like.
Hugh, you got a question?
I just want to make sure I understand. So it's, it's $620,000 per, per sludge removal, and you're doing four of them. Is that correct? I mean, come over here. Is that, is that correct?
It's $620,000 for this year.
For this year?
Yes.
Next year, it could go up?
Most likely. Costs go up, they don't go down. So I would anticipate having to adjust it for next year as well, so.
Versus the $1.1 million for just one?
Yes, this is half of the $1.1 million. And so the other half, as it would be projected right now, would be the other half of it. But I would anticipate that cost going up for next year as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Hugh. Any other questions? Anybody online? No? Then I'll close public comment and return to council for any additional statement, questions, or a motion to accept this resolution.
Well, if there's no other comments, I'll make a motion. We adopt Resolution Number 2025, next in order. One, amending the FY 2025-26 capital budget and increasing the 25-26 project budget from 500 to 620,000. Two, awarding a construction contract to Synagro in the amount of 610,987. And three, authorizing the Public Works Director to execute contract change orders in an aggregate amount not to exceed the project budget in conjunction with the sludge removal and hauling project WW 26-0400.
Second. We have a second roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Washington.
Yes. Moving on to the management and staff oral reports, item number 11, Public Works Utility Update. Mr. Holly?
Although I used to be the Public Works Director, I'm going to go ahead.
I know that you were going to tell me who was going to go up there next.
Our, our leadership team from our utilities group is coming up, many of the same folks that we just saw. And many of the fine women and men in the department are in the back of the room as well.
Looking good back there.
How you doing? So last time, I gave a utilities update, what I did essentially, because I have the pleasure of working with a tremendous team of managers and working under a great Public Works Director. I wanted to have them come up here and kind of talk about their divisions and their staff. As you can see, their staff have come out to support them. What a wonderful job that they're doing. So as we go into this presentation, I think this is it. And I am more of the person who's going to introduce this amazing team. So you have Pam Phillips, as I said, the Environmental Services Manager, Nolan Garcia, the Chief Plant Operator, and Dominic Patrick, the Water Systems Manager. And they're going to give the presentation tonight, and then we're going to take any questions, if you had any. And so further ado, come on up, Dom.
Hello. My name is Dominic Patrick, the Water Systems Manager for the City of American Canyon. The water treatment plant has two facilities there. We have the membrane treatment plant and the conventional water treatment plant. We have analyzers across, water quality analyzers, analyzers across the facility. These analyzers collect data 24/7, 365, around the clock. Those analyzers are then reported to the state on a monthly basis. Staff do lab calibrations and make sure that these analyzers are reading accurately. And then we also respond to customer service, update city website, and provide public tours. Maintenance, we handled 941 service calls. Another highlight here, we repaired 18 water service line connections and three water main repairs. Some of our major projects, we had our plant mechanics installed two 14-inch check valves to the conventional backwash plant. to the conventional backwash pipeline. This enhances the performance of the conventional plant filter and water quality. We also installed a 16-inch automatic valve. This allows us to better control the tank levels, allowing our tanks to fill and draw, which equates to fresher water for our customers. We added 24/7 surveillance. So if the facility is breached after operation hours, staff and management can be alerted. We are in the beginning stages of our SCADA upgrade project, and I want to give a shout out to the communications team for helping us produce the annual water quality report, which you could find on the city website. The City of American Canyon is projected to use 2,200 acre feet of water. This is a 9% reduction compared to our five-year average. This gave us the confidence to transfer over 1,000 acre feet of water through the Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District, which is equivalent to about $400,000. And with our partnership with Recology and a heavy lift from the water distribution team, we removed over 400 tons of the backwash solids, which is equivalent to a 1.2 million dollar contracted disposal. And now I hand the presentation over to Nolan Garcia with the water reclamation facility.
Well, good evening, everybody. I am Nolan Garcia, and not as tall as Norm, so let me lower this. As Dominic and Norm both said, I am the chief plant operator for the water reclamation facility, and I'm going to give you guys our update for the facility and our collections team today. We do work diligently every day to improve the quality of wastewater and preserve that natural water resource for reuse. Our facility is staffed by three plant operators, one plant mechanic, and one chief plant operator. We also maintain and operate six sewer pump and lift stations. Our collections crew is staffed by four maintenance workers and one maintenance supervisor, and those guys also work very diligently to prevent sanitary sewer overflows by camera and cleaning the sewer system. We were happy to have Public Works Week this year, this spring, our first annual, our first Public Works Open House at the WRF, and everybody showed up for Public Works, and we appreciate that. We had demonstrations for our citizens out there. Our operations group gave plant tours. Collections crew, they demonstrated their camera and their vector to what they use to clean the sewers. We had our environmental services group demonstrating the lab work that we do when we're testing our water quality, as well as giving out compost and composters for our citizens. Water distribution crew also showed up and did a wonderful backflow demonstration for We have had a busy year at the WRF. Here's some current and future projects. Right now, we are currently in the middle of our membrane replacement. It is an agreement that we have with Veolia, we're going to replace a train a year for the next four years. It's actually, we have two years left after this one, with second train's being done right now. We are in the middle of our SCADA upgrade as well. That's going well, should be completed in mid-January. Biosolids removal project, of course, we just discussed that, so we know that that's getting ready to kick off. We also have a duckweed removal project that will start here in the next few weeks. So our welllands ponds that we discharge to get covered with duckweed. And the Audubon Society, it's part of our plan is to, we have to keep it, maintain. And Audubon Society has let us know that it's a little too much duckweed, so we're going to get that cleaned out here in the next few weeks. UV rehab, so our UV disinfection system is aging, and with that, we need to do a rehab. Phase one is going on right now, smaller components. I'm trying to work it into four phases, so it's budget-friendly, but that is something that we are looking at, that completing over the next four or five years. So plant expansion is something I've been talking about recently with Norm and Public Works Group. We are looking at needing to expand in the future, based off the projected flows that engineering is giving for the Watson Ranch project, Crawford Way project, the Oath Hill project. We will be at over 80% capacity once they're completed. Generally, in the wastewater field, once you hit 80% capacity, you need to be breaking ground for expansion. So I feel it's never too early to start bringing those things up. I know that they're looking at potentially 2030 for completion of Watson Ranch, but that just all depends on construction. And then also the high-strength waste facility, future project, I know that we're all aware of, and we're making headway on that, making good movement, and we're looking forward to that as well. So a little bit about what we're doing, what comes in. Our flows come in annually, we treat about 650 million gallons, 150 of that we recycle and give back out to the community. We have a wonderful group divisions, we have holistic operations between those divisions, environmental, collections, and maintenance. And because of the group and the way we work together, it ends up giving us better treatment outcomes, improved maintenance, and reduced environmental impact. We're happy to say that we had no violations this year issued from the state board. As we get into collections, those guys have been extremely busy, and my hat's off to Chris and his crew. They do a wonderful job, not just with the sewer system, but work at the plant itself. They've helped us out with a lot of construction projects, and so I want to thank Chris and his crew for everything they do for us. They have also, along with the projects at the plant, been taking care of the vintage ranch areas, doing CCTV inspections, lateral inspections and cleaning. There's also a long list of streets, Broadway, Teresa, we can see all the way down, all the streets, that they've also been taking care of doing the inspection and cleaning on those as well. And along with all those, they clean out our pump station wet wells as well. We do a quarterly maintenance on those, so that we make sure we keep any grease and rags and things out of there that could damage any pumps. We did also this year, complete the wastewater collection shop, as we can see here. They did move out a few years ago to the water reclamation facility, and we were able to install a shop this year for them. SSMP was updated as required by the state board. And then we also have some ongoing projects. Spill simulator station, which is another project that Chris had come up with, that'll provide training for everybody, so we can actually have onsite trainings for what spills look like coming out of the super system. And then the smart covers that we have in the system already, we're looking at installing an additional two. And with that, I will pass the next update on to Pam Phillips.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Pam Phillips, the Environmental Services Manager. So the Environmental Services Division, we protect the environment and public health by managing waste, ensuring regulatory compliance, and promoting sustainability. It's myself and three staff members, one in which is about a month new. We welcomed Lisa to our staff, like I said, about a month ago. This is like my table of contents of all the programs that I do manage, and just kind of an update on each of those. The annual reports that we do, the monitoring report for the wastewater treatment plant, we did have, though it wasn't a board, board violation, we did violate our permit with one of the testings that we do. So we just had to continue testing for a couple months until we got that under control, and even though we weren't penalized by the board, the total cost of those tests was about $12,000. So that was, that was enough for us. Biosolids, we did 73 dry metric tons last year. The collections and the operations did some great, great work at the plant with the middle pond, trying to get some of those solids out, and with our, our partnership with Recology, they were able to help us out with that as well. Our pre-treatment annual report, we, we had 82 regulated dischargers. Anytime we regulate somebody, that means that we're doing permits and inspections. So I have one person, actually, Melissa's here, she's my regulatory compliance person for all of our commercial SIU. So she's, you know, she's really out in the community, inspecting, re-permitting, and that sort of thing. We had our pollution prevention annual report. Again, those are just trends that we have to show to the board, showing that we're looking at our five-year trends for pollutants, we're looking at one-year trends for pollutants. If we see something that we need to further investigate, then that's what we do. We had a recycled water annual report. All of these reports unfortunately are all due within like four months, so the first four months of the year are pretty hectic for us, trying to gather a lot of information. Solid Waste, again, another annual report that is mandated. We just report on the various programs that we do, that Recology helps us out with. The 2024 annual Recology report came in as well, and I want to point out that we only had a 47% diversion rate, and by 2025, we were supposed to have a 75% diversion rate. So my team is putting together some outreach for residents. On top of the outreach that goes out when we do our annual flip the lids, we're really trying to get some outreach on organics and recycling. People still don't have regular recycling under, you know, understanding as well, so. We did the flip the lids, I guess, and we did 450 addresses and 960 containers, so that means staff is up at 5:00 AM, headlights on their heads, looking at trash, you know. We have a great AI program that you, they flip over the garbage and it will bring out everything that's not supposed to be in that container, and then they can do reports on We had 780 yards of residential compost that we gave away, and actually more's coming. We did get some, we're getting some more bags coming to the community garden. We also had a backyard compost class with the community garden. We're going to do another one in September, and so Melissa and Lisa went out and had a small group of residents and kind of showed them how to start a compost, and then everybody got composters. We also have the bottle refill stations that you see outside here, we have them at the library, and we also have them at the senior center. You might see a few new bottle refill stations in different parks. There's the bottle refill stations with the dog bowls in them. We were able to install, I think, about eight of those around town. Some of the parks can't get them that are, have been changed over to recycled water. There's no more, no longer potable water available, or there's not a sewer connection for the water to go back into. Also be on the lookout at different community events. We were able to get a hydration station. So this is a big trailer, and when you open it, it kind of looks like I'm going to start pouring you some beer, but it's actually water. You can go and fill up your bottles with potable water instead of buying the plastic reused, or the plastic bottles. Finally, we do stormwater, again, another annual report. We help with illicit discharges. We have the air permits that we do, we also have the HMVP. And again, with each of those permitting, it's, those are yearly permits, they're yearly updates, they're yearly trainings for staff that are involved with that. And there's also the permitting authority will come out and do some inspections with that, so we always have to be prepared for, for those. And finally, we do a lot of outreach with different partners within the community. We do Meet Me in the Streets, Donaldson Way Career Fair, Citizen Academy, ACCPF. We also do a lot of collaboration within our own, within our own divisions. We helped out with the SSMP, we did some sampling at the Watson Ranch quarry, and we all are always very conscious about the fats, oil, and grease in the collection system. And again, like Nolan said, I want to shout out to all the people, that all of our staff here, without them, like, we can't, us three don't do anything. So they are the, the workhorses that, you know, for the city. And again, we couldn't totally do it without, without any of them here. And that's it. If you have any questions for any of us, we'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And I want to take a moment just to say thank you to our dedicated Public Works team, all of you. You know, every time I've gone to any of the locations, you guys have been willing to stop what you're doing to kind of educate me on what's going on, so I appreciate all that. It's, a lot of the stuff that you do is always behind the scenes, so people take it for granted what you guys do. I mean, I turn my water on, take my shower, and I don't think nothing about it, but you, but the reason I have it is because of what you guys are doing, so I thank you, thank you a lot. It's not the most glamorous job in the world, but it's critical to our city and our residents, so thank you, thank you very much. And also, I had the opportunity last week to tour the waste management with the Congressman Mike Thompson, and he was really impressive, impressed with the quality of work that you are doing, the things that you got, have going on, so thank you all. I know city manager Holly, you were involved in that, explaining how the tariffs were affecting costs associated with the, with the plant, so thank you very much for that as well. And whole team, as the leaders are a representative of how the workers are, so you guys seem like you're happy, and I appreciate what's going on, I appreciate the leaders. Erica, I think you're doing a wonderful job. Norman, wonderful job. You know, Pam, Nolan, Dominic, thank you, thank you for what you're doing. So I'll open it up to council questions, starting with council member Oro.
Thank you. I think the word critical is important there, so thank you for your work. It is critical work, and nobody seems to think about it, which is a good thing, right? But I do, I did think about one thing, and this is a question from Pam. In the past, we had some COVID reports, have you been tracking that lately? Have you, can you share any details of what's coming out of the wastewater with regards to COVID in the area?
I haven't checked the dashboard lately. We're still testing, we test three times a week. Again, I think anybody, you can go on and look at the dashboard, I honestly, I haven't recently, so.
Okay, we'll go on, where can we find that then?
It's under the CCD, CCD, the state's health site.
Okay, thank you.
Gosh, I can't even talk.
The pressure.
I had too much pizza, it's Nora's fault.
Cheers. Councilmember Cruz.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I second what Mayor Pierre was saying, that you guys have a difficult job, not the most glamorous, but we do need your skills and activities and what you do for our city. Question, so wastewater, so when there's a sewage clog, if you will, I know you have certain devices that, that seize when it clogs up. Is there anything as we as residents can do to help prevent that? I know I noticed fats, oils, and grease. Are there anything else in households that people use that you say, hey?
It's about flushables.
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, fats, oil, and grease, it's called fog. That's a huge problem, and people don't realize that by, you know, it's just not the grease from your bacon or your hamburgers, it's the salad oil, the mayonnaise, the milk, anything with a fat in it can clog up the sewer. And it goes down hot, right? And, but then it's mixed with all this other water, and all of a sudden, it gets cold, and what happens when it gets cold, it starts hardening. So if, if it's hardening, and then you have people who are like, oh, I want to use a non-flushable wipe, but it says flushable, then those wipes are getting caught on the, on the grease, and then it all comes up. Another bad thing is like the tree roots, there's not a lot to do about those, but you know, you don't want to be planting trees around your sewer or your laterals as well, so. But the flushable wipes are a problem, fats, oil, and grease is our problem. I don't, one of my slides, you know, we have, we find floss, floss is a big problem, it gets caught in the, in the, in the pumps. Contact lenses, it's plastic, so it kind of, that's, that's contributing to the microplastics. We could go on and on about all kinds of bad things, but anyway, those are the main things. Melissa, can you, she's my, she's my fog lady. If you can think of anything else that's bad in this that we see.
Perfect. The no wipes are flushable.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. One more question. So I know, I understand too, that you also retrofit some of our piping with our town that are old. I understand it's maybe 50 years is kind of like the golden number. How are we doing on that? Especially the piping near schools, like Donaldson Way and such.
Yeah, so are you referring to potable and collections, or?
Yes.
So just the distribution system?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so the distribution system, so we're continuing down our CIP list, and it depends on the pipe age, whether, and the condition of the pipe. So we've assessed the pipes, if they have more tasks that have been required, as in repairs and breaks, that's going higher up on the list, also, again, age, and then critical infrastructure points. So main, transition water mains that are connected to city schools and, and so forth. So.
Grease is one, you know, I mean, like going down there, they're going to replace that one towards the jump, so, yeah, they're, they're on the path of knocking them down.
Yeah, we, we're going through our CIP list, a lot of it has, a lot of the pipe is AC pipe, asbestos cement pipe, that's more than 50 years old.
Again, thank you. Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes, this one's for the wastewater plant. You talked about expansion. My recollection is that we had like four trains, and then we had three of them in use. Have we added the fourth already, and we still need to expand, or is that the expansion?
No, the fourth is currently in use, we use that on a daily basis.
Oh, okay.
The expansion is based off our dry weather flow, which were permitted at 2.5 million gallons. Once all those projects I was speaking of come to completion, we'll be at about 2.1, which is just a little over 80%. So we would be looking at needing a fifth train.
Okay. That'll be an adventure, won't it?
It will.
Thank you. Thank you.
Seeing that there's no other questions, one of the things I wanted to kind of like acknowledge is that typically people wait till a person or a group of people retire before they kind of give them an applause. I just want to kind of stand up and just say thank you, Public Works, for doing what you do.
Hey Mayor, there is one other person I want to acknowledge. He's not in the room and he has helped and I want to bring him in. This is Brian Anderson. He's our city consultant. He's been critical helping Dom over at the water plant. He came in, he was the interim wastewater manager when he came in, water reclamation manager. And he, he's made a lot of good decisions, you know, I mean. And I, he couldn't make it here tonight, but I wanted to give Brian some flowers as well as Francisco Ramirez. I have to say his name because he works tirelessly, tirelessly. And Chris Morris as well, working real hard, looking like a million dollars tonight. So I wanted to, you know, shout out some names. Mark, you know how you are and, you know, we've got some great hires. So I just wanted to say some names to some people. And, you know, I talk to you guys all the time, but I've really wanted to give you guys some flowers out here. Josh as well. So just wanted to do that publicly in front of everybody because these guys, they really do work hard. Guys and gals do work hard.
Signs of a good leader. Thanks, Norman. And thank you, Mr. Holly, for putting the team together. We'll move on to our mayor and council comments and committee reports, starting with the Vice Mayor, Mark Joseph.
Everything, my report made it there on the second throw. That was a little late, but it's there. Probably the, the highlight would be the SR thirty-seven meeting. I've commented to a few people that after you go to about three or four of those, you begin to figure out the whole project and, and how it all fits together. The good news is I think we have most of the funding for the first phase, which is dealing with Sears Point to Vallejo or vice versa. So it is coming together. We will begin seeing some improvements over the next probably five years. And everything else is in there if you have any questions.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember David Orol.
Nothing to report, sir. Thank, oh, well, I do. I had firsthand account of the first concert at the Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens. I attended that first concert, it was the Cascade Concert, an event. And then I woke up the next day to make sure everything went smooth and it seemed to be all right. I watched online and I'm glad that the residents, there was very little complaints. And I'll just say that the event was excellent. Lot of energy, a lot of new people to town. Hotels were full. Like to see it happen again and I think it will. And I think we're on our way to having a town center. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Orol. Councilmember Lamertina.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cruz.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So attended a few events locally. Tended to Ruins with Janelle, Director of Parks. Was an excellent event, as usual, each year, annual. Thank you for that. Attended the Napa, the North Bay Water Association District, my first meeting with them. We talked about scholarships and things that we're going to disseminate there. Also attended Napa County Flood Control, the Water Conservation District meeting today. And we approved with the, the major budget that we're going to be starting the project there for the flood control. Other than that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. I've actually added all of my commission committee reports to the agenda, so you can read it there. So I have no additional committee report information. And let's move on to our future agendas, if any. Seeing no one having any future agenda items, we'll close that out.
I, one, it's not a report. It's basically harking back to Justin's question about the status of that four-lot subdivision at West Caroline. Could we get a report on, I, my understanding is the whoever was going to do it fell through and they haven't been able to sell it or, or whatever. But if we could get a quick little report so that we can, you know, in particular let Justin know, but also the council as well.
It's my understanding that it's gone through several hands, different.
We'll send a report to Justin and you all.
Okay. With that said, I'll close the regular city council meeting and then we'll be moving to our special joint city council open space and active transportation sustainability commission meeting, following a brief break. And I know that Leon and Doug have some goodies back there to share.
I just want to tell, if anyone is on Zoom, we will be resuming the second meeting with the same link, so you can remain on the line and we will pick it up in a few minutes.
Do you need more space? Are you okay? Yep. Do you want to go a little bit more? Yes. It's vintage. This is vintage. This is from Beth Goff. She gave this to me. This is vintage, my skirt.
I saw that and I'm thinking, oh, Scottish or Irish.
Well, I do have, I do.
Find some more Scottish, a lot of Scottish, yeah, some Irish.
You're Irish?
Yeah, my dad is Irish.
You're pro-Irish?
Pro-Irish. And I do have one percent of Italian in me.
I have.
I have.
I have twenty-five percent. What else you got?
Not.
I have twenty-five percent Manchuria.
What? Where is that from? Where, where is that place?
Manchuria is kind of like off of Russia. It's, it's in between China and Russia. I don't even know if it's still called Manchuria.
I know, isn't it so weird? Like if you look at that and you're, my brother didn't. My brother got, I do, it's interesting. I also, I always had always looked like I'm Jewish. My brother was Jewish, but I did not.
No, some people will get Native American.
Got what you got.
Brother or sister home, but they're, I'm the same parent.
Are you going to be there?
Rich genes getting passed on. Because you get, you get half your genes from your dad and half from the best. It's like a deck of hearts. You need a two of hearts. You might have got that two of hearts from your mom or you might have got. When you get one, you need a full deck to play. So, so your sister may not have that gene or you may, but it doesn't. I guess you would almost need to, your kids, and then compare them to get a complete.
Yeah, we're just going to go back to closed session after this.
Are you guys going back then? That's what I was thinking. Nicole's going to put the food away that she left it out of because you want to eat dinner. It's going to be, I mean.
That's okay.
Some chromosomes only get passed through the male, the female line. Like the Y chromosome or something like that.
Oh, God. I just want to.
No, no, we were going to say something I thought. The PDF was attached to your face. I took the PDF.
Bad boy.
Re-formatted it to PowerPoint and put it on there for you.
It's good, what do you do, get there, out there. So you finally checked out.
Presentation on the, on the plan.
I know, right? Where's Jason?
Okay, everybody, we're going to try to get this second meeting on, on the road here. So. Good evening, everyone. We will call to order tonight's special joint meeting with the Open Space Activity Transportation and Sustainability Commission. Please join me as we rise for a pledge of allegiance.
A little further away. In terms of where emissions come from, the biggest source in most communities is transportation, right? The cars, the buses, the trucks, the equipment, the off-road equipment that we operate and use to get around every day. That's about thirty-nine percent for the on-road and maybe nine percent for the off-road sector, meaning tractors and things that aren't allowed to be on the roadways. Building energy is pretty close behind on-road transportation at about twenty-three percent. Solid waste, methane produced by decomposing waste is about sixteen percent of the emissions. And then agriculture, water, wastewater and imported water, a little bit smaller than the emissions pie, but at least measurable and trackable to some extent. We did that forecasting work and set targets for this regional plan that are aligned with state goals. The baseline level is the column on the far left of this chart you see on the screen. And then for 2030, 2035 and 2045, we did two forecast scenarios. One is a no-action-taken, kind of a business-as-usual scenario. That's shown in the gray bars. And then next to the gray bar is the effects of this proposed draft plan and further reducing emissions. You can see that the no-action-taken emissions will go down in this region. That's largely because of the work that the state of California is doing to regulate emissions through vehicle standards, energy standards, the cap and trade program, a lot of different regulatory tools that the state is using to drive down emissions. But you can see, it's not enough to hit the targets that we need to be hitting here in the region. We're falling short, which is why we're doing this plan. With this plan, you can see that those emissions are below the targets that align with the state's targets for the years 2030, 2035 and 2045. And good news, the graph, the bars on the far right, we don't quite get to zero with the plan, at least on a net emission reductions basis, but there are enough offsetting measures in the plan, especially focused around ag and open space to help us sequester carbon and eventually zero out emissions by the year twenty-five, which is really good news. There are about twenty-one high-level strategic categories in the plan for reducing greenhouse gas emissions and getting to carbon neutrality. We have forty-six discrete greenhouse gas reduction measures or policies, if you will. Not all of them are quantifiable, but we know seventeen of those measures are definitely quantifiable and get a lot of the work done to get you very down, down to hitting your targets in the region. In addition to all those policies, there are literally almost two hundred. It says a hundred plus here, but it's literally closer to two hundred implementing actions in the plan. There's a lot of detail and thought that went in. That's why it took so long, as Brent said, is we did a lot of work with staff across the jurisdictions to figure out what's truly actionable and makes sense, both in the near term and the short term, as well looking out into the long term for how we sustain our efforts beyond just the first five years or so. There's a lot of saying, okay, we need to retrofit buildings. That's great. That's the measure of the policy, but how are we going to do it? Well, there's a lot of steps we need to take to get there around incentives, financing, regulation, codes, standards, inspections, follow-ups, community engagement, right? So for one policy, there can be dozens of implementing actions. We probably didn't even capture all of them, but that's one of the reasons the plan is so long, is because we have implementing actions that seem to make sense to staff. And we're starting to hear, get feedback from the community now on, on the scope of that effort. So let me dive into the each individual sector so you get a sense of the what here. We first start with building, oops, we first start with building energy. And this sort of, the biggest effort that we need to undertake regionally in the county is to reduce energy in existing buildings. So it's all about clean and efficient use of energy in existing buildings, along with, of course, with, with the growing share of renewable energy in our local generation portfolio. But that, the daunting challenge here is retrofitting a lot of older buildings that weren't built to codes and are still using both natural gas and electricity. The key, the real core strategy here is electrifying our existing building stock and getting gas out of buildings. That is the number one, kind of central goal of most of the measures in this sector. We also have zero-carbon new development. We know we're going to be building more buildings in the future, both residential and non-residential. Fortunately, the codes and standards that we have in the books today, those are pretty darn efficient buildings. And while we can do a little better with reach codes and so forth, zero-carbon new development is fairly easy to achieve and should become quite cost-effective over the next few years as technology improves. But the real lift here is retrofitting existing buildings. We estimated with staff's help, about fifty thousand total buildings across six jurisdictions exist, most of which are still using natural gas. So there's a lot of work to do. That's a huge number. If we spread that over twenty years, it's probably manageable, but it's going to take sustained work and investments and staff resources, incentive, pots of money for incentives, financing programs and things that really need to be scaled up. A lot of it exists, but it needs to be scaled up and be made more cost-effective. That third bullet, though, is key, and I'm not going to repeat this for every sector, but for every single sector I'm going to talk about, community engagement, awareness, education, and even just the overall concept of changing our behaviors, is key to the success of these measures. When we talk about transportation, that on-road, bus, off-road, but I'm going to focus mostly on on-road in this piece, it's really, first of all, about reducing how much we drive. And the nerdy planners in the room know that as reducing vehicle miles traveled or VMT. But really, what is that at the end of the day? It's about providing people with more mobility options and choices. I'm glad the folks from OSATs are here, because the AT and OSATs is about active transportation. We have numerous measures around active transportation that are aligned with some of the programs and the plans that already exist. But again, it's about scaling up those efforts and finding ways to support NVTA, to support individual jurisdictions who are making local decisions on expanding mobility and active transportation choices and options for the community. We also have more targeted strategies, like what can we do about visitors and tourism? We know you're all working on that in this region, and there's a lot of ways that the plan talks about maybe expanding or thinking about new or creative ways to reduce VMT for tourists and visitors as well. A lot of the work in the transportation also is about supporting the electrification mandates that CARB already regulates in the building stock. You don't have jurisdictional control at the local government level over the kind of cars people buy. That's the state's role. But what you can do locally is support that local clean energy fueling infrastructure. So that's electric vehicle charging. Someday, we hope to see clean and cost-effective and renewable hydrogen come on the market. So when that technology matures, we believe it will, maybe further down the line, years or years from now, we'll be seeing more hydrogen refueling, infrastructure needs pop up in the region. So anyway, just a little flavor of what's in that transportation sector. Let's move on to solid waste. I was really thrilled to see that your Public Works team gave a great presentation already tonight about all the hard work they're doing on recycling and composting. And, I mean, I think that really is the core of what's in this cap as well, saying, hey, we've got goals. We're not necessarily attracted to achieving them quickly, but the RCAP has some ideas for leveraging what you're already doing, not just here in American Canyon, but across the region in terms of pooled resources, shared resources, common programs, ways that American Canyon may be leading and others can follow and vice versa, on other, other pathways for promoting zero-waste and compost solutions. We also need to be thinking about, and this is more on the infrastructure side, reducing existing landfill emissions. We've already put so much waste into our regional landfills, both here in the county and at the Potrero Hills landfill over in Solano. There's already so much waste in there that's producing a lot of methane now, and we know that there's technology, and that we need to be thinking and helping landfill operators find the money to look at more cost, cost-effective ways to more effectively capture and destroy methane, or maybe put it to productive use in the form of biogas and other waste-to-energy solutions. We don't get super prescriptive in the plan about exactly how that will be done. We know there's a lot of engineering and study, but at least we've identified some measurable goals or kind of targets that we could set for increasing the landfill capture and destruction efficiency in landfills in, in, in the county and in the broader region. Moving on to water and wastewater, you know, these emissions in this source really mostly come from the electricity used to move water around, all the pumping that needs to happen. Not everything, unfortunately, happens through gravity flow, so with all that pumping and treatment emissions through electricity use. We also do have fugitive methane, that methane that gets produced from wastewater treatment and other process emissions in the wastewater stream as well. Again, not a very big sector of the inventory, but when we think about water resilience in the future, conserving water, making better, more efficient use of water, diversifying how we source and treat water, even recycled water, which we heard talked about already tonight as well, these are all part of the solutions to driving down emissions and being more sustainable in our water and wastewater sector. The last, really major focus of the cap on the action, the greenhouse gas side, is agriculture and open space. And of course, you're an incorporated community, so a lot of that ag isn't really present here in American Canyon, but in the unincorporated area and even small pockets around the region, we do have agriculture, of course. It's the, kind of the backbone of your economy at the very end of the day, in terms of a lot, where a lot of the revenues come from, right? And so that ag is really important, obviously, the way to drive down emissions in the ag space. It's a combination of getting the equipment to down to zero emissions, just like we want our vehicles to do. But it's also about things like carbon farming and finding kind of more ecological ways to actually sequester emissions in the soil and in the plants that we're growing in our agricultural reasons, and also in the undeveloped open spaces further north in the county. A lot of that post-fire restoration work that we're doing to just kind of help the communities recover from fire also helps us sequester carbon, which is really, really helpful. More in the urban communities like American Canyon, it's simple strategies like expanding the urban forest, and we know you're already doing some of that work. Finding more creative ways to be more sustainable in the open space work that we're doing here in American Canyon, other urban communities, can focus a lot more on what's in the right-of-way, you know, trees in the right-of-way, trees in public parks, helping private property owners figure out the best places to plant trees and maximize solar gain and everything else. There's a lot of really good strategy that we're, we're talking about in this plan around kind of greening the urban communities we have in the region. So take a note of that as well. Okay, so that does it for the climate action or the greenhouse gas mitigation part of the plan. Now let's quickly talk about climate adaptation. Climate adaptation, like I mentioned before, is really about assessing the vulnerability of the region to climate. We did a climate vulnerability assessment early on in the project back at the beginning of last year. And that vulnerability helped us really understand how climate is exacerbating the hazards you already know about, whether that's wildfire, flood risk, things like extreme heat and the impacts on the community from that. And of course, the novel climate impact of sea level rise, which is new because of climate change. So we looked at all these hazards and risks, and we did that a vulnerable assessment, and then we identified strategies and measures that we believe are responsive to those issues. So I have them, again, listed here on the screen. I'm not going to do a deep dive on each one tonight, because I know I'm, the time is getting short, and I'd love to get into a discussion with you all about your questions and comments. But just know that the plan, much like the greenhouse gas strategies and measure side of things, does have very specific strategies for reducing wildfire risk, for mitigating extreme heat and outdoor workers or infrastructure that can be exposed to growing more frequent extreme heat events and, and rising temperatures. We do have enhanced flood protection measures that build on a lot of the flood protection planning that's already gone on in the region, and just thinking about ways to move the needle on the effectiveness of those strategies, as we might see more chaotic and more unpredictable or more extreme flooding events here in the future in Napa County. There are some long-term adaptation to sea level rise, and one of those strategies, of course, is a new regulatory requirement for coastal communities to comply with what's called a shoreline adaptation planning requirement. Rather than duplicate that effort will be, which will be very technical and specific to meet Bay Conservation and Delta Commission's requirements, we pointed to that as probably a key implementation pathway for American Canyon and the county of Napa, and perhaps to some extent, the very southern part of the city of Napa, as they have some tidally influenced lands along the Napa River watershed as well. Okay, almost done here. I did want to just quickly talk about implementation monitoring. I think it's the most important part of any plan. We want to make sure that all these measures and actions across the gamut of both greenhouse gas mitigation and climate adaptation are implementable, and that we have a strategy to at least collaborate, collaborate across jurisdictions on effective implementation, identifying, if we have a regionally common measure, who's going to lead it? Is it going to be the county? Will each city lead their own measure and coordinate? So we have a little bit of information in Chapter Six on some of the pertinent dependencies that kind of map out which measures apply to whom, which actions need to be taken first in the next five years and which are more longer term. We know that most of the measures in this plan are commonly shared across all six jurisdictions in the county. There are some that are very unique and specific to individual jurisdictions. For example, most of the ag measures will be led by the county, and the cities probably wouldn't be super involved in some of those, obviously. But, so we do need to see regional coordination on implementation, both in the near term and moving forward as the plan is adopted and implemented. We are having discussions with staff across the jurisdictions now, that inter-agency working group that Jesse facilitates. There have been staff discussions about the need to maybe be more specific, either now as we move to final plan and putting a little bit more detail and specificity around our five-year commitments. We might need to actually extend that work beyond planned adoption and really focus on the near-term hires we need to make, the near-term funding opportunities we need to begin applying for. So we sort of know that the back, again, the backbone framework of an implementation strategy that's regional-coordinated is in the plan, but we could always build that out a little bit more before planned adoption, so we'll be working on that with staff. There will be a need to monitor and report on the efficacy of the plan and how it's performing and meeting greenhouse gas targets, as well as climate adaptation needs in the community. So there will need to be periodic updates to the regional inventory. We definitely want to see at least annual reporting. Some folks think it should be more often, but annual reporting just on how are we doing on implementing all these measures and actions? Where are wins? Where do we need more support? And making sure each of the elected bodies has a chance to hear those reports periodically, at least annually. We also will need to periodically update this regional plan. I've been working on climate action plans for close to fifteen years of my career, and not a single plan I've worked on got implemented the way I said it would. There's always a change in the plan, right? The technology changes, funding sources change, strategies change. And so probably every three to five years, this region probably should be adopting, re-adopting or updating the plan. They may not need to be extensive, but you know, five, ten years into things, plans can change, and we may need to update the plan to make sure we're reflecting the best technology and the best strategies that are available in the marketplace, as well as policy innovation that will continue to change. We did do some order-of-magnitude cost estimates in the plan. That's contained in one of the appendices, and there's a roll-up summary of that in one of the sections of Chapter Six, the implementation and monitoring sets, chapter. I will note that those cost estimates don't represent essentially the full cost of implementation of the plan. There were a limited subset based on some budget constraints in the project, but we did quantify nineteen of the, probably the most impactful measures across both the greenhouse gas mitigation portion of the plan and the adaptation portion. Some of those numbers are large, because they're based on the theory that, hey, retrofitting fifty thousand buildings is no small feat. That one measure alone, it's probably over four hundred million dollars, spread over twenty years, all six jurisdictions, every single existing bidding, building needing to be retrofitted. Obviously, if you think about the typical cost of electrification project, that's actually no small surprise. Those are costly investments to make at the, at the homeowner, the business owner, the property owner level. But not all those costs would need to be borne by individual jurisdictions, right? There's a lot of money currently flowing through incentive programs, and so unfortunately, we're going to lose some of the federal incentives, maybe just in the short term, hopefully. We don't really know where that is going. But, you know, the idea is that we have quantified at an order-of-magnitude level with a lot of range for margin of error there. This is, you know, could it be fifty percent higher, could be seventy-five percent less? We don't really know. But at a long-range planning scale, that order-of-magnitude cost estimate is really the appropriate way to approach things. It's just a rough picture of the scale of the potential cost of implementation. If the jurisdictions decide to choose to do additional analysis, that's definitely a room for that in the plan. We could always add more cost analysis information into that section if, if it's desired. And finally, that last bullet point is, again, there's hope. We actually did a lot of work. We hired EPS. Jacobs Engineering did the cost estimates. We hired Economic and Planning Systems to give us an initial analysis of just the beginnings of what we call a funding and financing roadmap. We really looked at all the strategies and actions and measures in the plan to understand what, how would we possibly pay for any of this? And they did a good job of just laying out the typical sources we would see for different types of measures and actions, you know, local monies, statewide grants, financing mechanisms new, and some of the more emerging policy change around climate resilience financing that's emerging from changes in state policy. So we have a good basic understanding of the tools, in other words, the funding and financing options that are available to all six jurisdictions, and ways that those can be leveraged for, to support implementation. I'm not going to go into the weeds on them tonight, but just know that that's also in Chapter Six of the plan. Last slide, then I'll stop and love to hear the discussion. This plan has been published for public review since October, excuse me, August first. It is on the website. I don't have a link here, but there is a climate action plan, regional climate action plan website for the project. That comment period does close in two weeks on September thirtieth, so we're hoping, folks, if you haven't seen the plan or want to comment, there's still a little bit more time to take a look at the document. Two ways to comment. One is to go right online to the website. There's a nice comment tool that folks can look at the PDF, and there's a little nice tool. You can literally drop a comment bubble and just write your comment right there on the plan. You don't need to download it. You don't need to send in a long email. You can just comment right there online, very carbon-friendly solution. You can also send an email to RCAP, R-C-A-A-P, at countyofnapa.org, and all the written comments of, you know, organizations want to write letters or just write a long email, write all your comments, point, pine, point. Folks can do that as well. We will be reviewing, of course, all comments received on the plan, comments we're receiving at these public meetings, comments received at the community open houses that we've held. There is one more open house to be held, by the way. It's in Calistoga tomorrow night at the community center at five-thirty PM. So if anybody out there is watching, you're just hearing about this for the first time, there is an opportunity. You'll have to head way up the valley, but it is open to you, open house. Everyone is welcome to those. We have had three other open houses that I mentioned. We had American Canyon a few weeks ago, Yountville, and just about a week and a half ago, over in the city of Napa. So this will be our fourth open house tomorrow night, and the public is welcome to come. We will be preparing an environmental document. We had budget approved by the CAC, the Climate Action Committee, back in August to do an initial study, to really just look at the environmental effects of the plan and probably get that out for review once it's finished in the early part of the year in 2026. Once that SEQA process has been played out, we're hoping to bring the final plan and SEQA document forward for adoption and certification and really move this plan forward into implementation after the spring of 2026. That concludes my presentation. I know I've said a lot, and it would be really love to hear your comments or questions tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Eric. I'm going to ask for some clarifying, if there's any clarifying questions through the commission and through the council, but I'll start with the commission first, if there's any clarifying questions that you need for Eric.
Yes, hello. My name is Debbie Cheveria. I'm the newest member. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you very much for your presentation. I find it just wonderful, so thank you for your work in that. I have a question regarding Proposition Four and how that money that was approved, voted in last year, how is that going to be allocated? I know that's probably a convoluted question, but how does that tap into what our goals are for 2030 and going into 2045, as far as helping retrofitting the buildings and so on?
Yeah. Great question, not a convoluted question at all. The Prop Four Climate Bond that was approved by voters last year is a really important new commitment by the state to fund all sorts of climate-based initiatives. Some of the money's going to go to state agencies and conservancy. There was sort of an earmark that got approved for a subset of that ten billion last, earlier in the year. I'm told that as part of the budget deal that was finally done just a couple nights ago, that there is a spending plan. I personally haven't read it yet, so I need to do my homework now. But, you know, when we worked with EPS, you know, they understood just preliminarily kind of the basic things that were in the, in the bond package at the time. So we know that that's going to be a really important funding source. Another important source is that the legislature did also, also reauthorize cap and trade for another twenty years, out to 2045. So as part of that commitment, there is what's called a greenhouse gas reduction fund. All the monies that polluters pay through that program gets put in a, a big statewide budget fund called the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund. So a lot of the monies that have already been dumped throughout communities, not, actually dumped is a terrible word, invested in communities throughout the state, through things like the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Program, Act of Transportation Grants, High Speed Rail. There's a lot of sustainable initiatives that have been funded by the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund over the years, and so there's a new commitment to continue to make those investments in communities. So, you know, these big statewide funding sources, they're complex, and so, you know, as we build on the work that EPS has done, that's in the appendix of this plan, we will need to start digging in with staff across all six jurisdictions to figure out what are our near-term opportunities. Let's not miss those. So I really appreciate the question and the comment, because it will be important to maximize Prop Four funding opportunities.
Thank you.
Right, Chair Mattson.
It should be on.
Well, Chair Mattson is out tonight, and in her absence, she's written in some questions that I'm going to ask, please. The first one, she asked, is there a way to pull data out of the study, such as which of the proposed measures makes sense to be pushed in each of American Canyon's various sectors, for example, government, business, industrial, residential, hotels, restaurants, transportation, et cetera?
See, the best way to answer that question, it's a pretty broad question, but I think the answer is yes, we can. I mean, we have enough data to know where the measures apply. We did a lot of our calculations. We said the measure theoretically should apply in every jurisdiction. We kind of spread evenly like peanut butter across, but we generally know that if a measure applies in all six jurisdictions, that American Canyon's proportion of the inventory, let's say it's building energy, that you would probably have that level of reduction here. So to some extent, yes. The actual implementation details, though, are where that really plays out, and trying to understand, okay, if we have a commitment to retrofit, let's say, existing retail, and we want to see similar results in all six communities, how that actually might get implemented here might be just a little different than the other jurisdictions. But hopefully, there's some common commitments in that as a program like that gets stood up, that some of the modeling that goes in and the use cases and what you would typically expect to see based on the actual buildings you have here would be a little bit more customized in implementation. So the answer is yes, and there's probably more work to do in implementation to figure out exactly what it's going to look like.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then what are the assumptions used in this study to calculate American Canyon's greenhouse gas impact, such as numbers for residences and square feet of businesses?
Yeah. So yeah, those are the, that's the kind of source data we use to calculate emissions. You know, we don't, we don't put monitors out in the community and measure them like we do air pollutants. We actually use what's called activity data, combined with emission factors. So we actually take the number of homes, the vintage of homes, and then we get utility data from MCE or PG&E for gas and electricity, and we sort of look at what the typical usage rates are, and then we look at existing building stock based on sampling, and then we calculate emissions total and the aggregate, based on the numbers that we're seeing in terms of housing units, square foot of non-residential buildings, with all those factors applied. So it's kind of math-heavy, but yeah, that data is, we have that, and that's in the inventory. So if you look in the appendix to the plan where the greenhouse gas inventory is summarized, as well as the full inventory, which is hundreds of pages, all that data is there.
Available?
Yeah.
And then next question, can we get measure, can we measure penetration levels for businesses as usual and for reach targets for each measure for the American Canyon sectors, like number of houses? How many have been implemented already, and how many business-as-usual reach cases?
That one, I'd probably have to read it and get back to you. It's pretty complicated, but the answer is sort of. I heard something, like we've sort of done some of that, but some of what you mentioned, it's, I would have to just have a conversation probably with them to understand a little bit more, but appreciate the question.
And are there metrics available to use to monitor the success of mitigation?
Yes, yeah. In fact, that's when we talk about the monitoring and reporting. One of the key things in monitoring is the kind of data we decide to gather, and that will be a really important part of the regional implementation commitments, is who collecting what data, how often are we collecting it, and how are we going to report it? We have agreed to work with staff through our contract to set up a dashboard online, where we can have real-time monitoring of data that we can gather real-time, or link to other people's databases, so people can actually say, hey, this month, how did we do on energy use? How did we do on VMT? How did we do on waste? So if we're able to aggregate and get everyone to share data in a central space, we can create a regional dashboard. That will take some work. That won't happen overnight. It's probably an after-planned adoption thing, but, you know, we had very early conversations with staff about what that could look like, and we're, we're able to build using Microsoft Power BI and some other off-the-shelf products, ways to stand up a dashboard for monitoring. So that, not only be counting it, but we're sharing the results and the real-time results as much as we can with the community.
Thank you.
No other questions from commission? I'll bring it to the council for any questions or clarifying statements from council. Councilmember Lametina.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. A couple of questions, what's going on with the feedback. I'm all about lowering carbon footprint, emissions, et cetera, et cetera, very passionate about it. But we often hear about the middle part, climate change, but we don't often hear the totality of it, where it begins and where it ends. So my concern is the human rights, where we're getting our minerals and everything for the change, and what happens afterwards? Where are we for the change, and what happens afterwards, where are we dumping all of our stuff? That's one question. I don't know if you have the capacity to answer that, or...
Yeah, I'm trying to think how to respond to that, I mean, we know that with all technologies, all products, all industrialized things we touch every day, it came from somewhere, right?
Right.
The cars we drive that are using gas, the engines and the motors and the oil extraction upstream, it all has environmental impacts. And the same is true for electric cars, it takes energy and resources to make a battery, or to make a powerful electric drivetrain that those electric cars rely upon. We can't make clean hydrogen yet, it's dirty, it takes a lot of energy just to make a unit of hydrogen, right? So, I guess my response is that all technology has environmental trade-offs, and that's something we're gonna ever accept as long as we live in a developed industrialized world. Now, how are we analyzing those trade-offs? We didn't do a deep, third-party, let's sure as I say, upstream analysis of all the tertiary or quaternary environmental effects or trade-offs, but those are published and those are known. And I think we've come to accept that that's reality, and folks have to sit with that. Could we do more, could we have a whole section of the plan looking at that? Possibly, but I think the question we ask is, to what end is that gonna help?
Thank you, and I have another question. Regarding the data servers and AI, I mean, that's sucking up a lot of energy. What do we do with that? Because we're very reliant on it, and how do we, how do we change that?
Yeah, that's a really good question. We're willing to explore that, the RCAP doesn't talk a whole lot about AI and its energy, being an energy monster. You tended to focus a little bit more on about what you can control here, but, you know, if staffer, electeds want to see more specificity on how you addressing the energy needs of AI, if you're seeing those facilities getting proposed here, that's something you could certainly add into the plan.
Thank you, I think that's all my questions.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes, so thank you, yeah, there is some serious feedback, but, thank you for the report, kind of like State Route 37, you almost have to hear it a few times before it starts sinking in. But I was also intrigued with the discussion about the $10 billion water bond and the additional cap and trade, and it got me thinking, we have adopted a zero-water footprint policy, and it's given us the ability to basically get money from new development to offset their water demand. Is there a way that we can do something similar to that in terms of climate action, so that we create a pool of cash that can help, you know, augment whatever MCE and whatever anybody else can do to help bring down the cost of retrofitting homes, for example, or something along those lines? Is that something that can be looked at as a means of generating the money?
Yeah. Yeah, the EPS analysis did mention fees and exaction as one way to generate revenue, you know, we can't just rely on general fund and state grants for everything, they need to be creative on financing, or, you know, creating new revenue streams. So that, something that was looked at, it wasn't a strong recommendation one way or another, but certainly, you know, that kind of more local mechanism of capturing a new revenue stream is discussed.
And then the second question for me is more of a process question. I know Climate Act, the Napa County Climate Action Committee wants to get feedback from all the jurisdictions, probably by the end of the month. And so, this is our meeting, so what is it that we want to do tonight? Just review it and say, this sounds good, or provide some kind of feedback? Again, that may not be the question for you, that may be for our staff.
Well, I'm happy to jump in, and Brad, if you want to follow him up with any cleanup remarks or steering individual, but we definitely are interested in hearing comments from elected officials, this is my fifth of six presentation, my last one is at St. Helena next Tuesday night. So, I've been hearing comments and questions, and even sort of, you know, notes from electeds to staff about what they're feeling or seeing in the plan. So if you do have specific comments, I want to make recommendations, or let staff and me know, we're happy to take comments on specifics tonight. But we understand it's a lot to process, I mean, it's hundreds of pages just in the main body alone, not to mention all the details. So, if you see something you really want to still let staff know, I mean, I don't know if you have to have another hearing to do that, but definitely we are open to comments from electeds, both now and even after the comment period, if needed.
Okay. Well, then, you know, for me, I have been a champion for this whole area for several years now, and I'm glad that slowly but surely we're getting there. And so I'm, overall, very, very happy that we're where we're at. I do have a more of an internal issue, and that is, we have talked about a lot of the low-hanging fruit. And we've talked about the idea that one of the OSAT's work plans is to try to figure out how to address that, education, taking advantage of freebies that are out there and so forth. And in my experience, if you don't have a warm body, you know, it's more talk than action. And so, when Councilmember Lamatina and I met with the city manager to kind of, you know, scope out this topic tonight, we also talked about trying to find funding for a part-time, what I'll call a program coordinator. And so, in that regard, where are we on that? Because I do think we need to have, or I would think, we need to have the council weigh in on, do we want to provide a part-time position who can at least begin to provide some of that, you know, nuts and bolts support at the staff level, so that we can get some of the low-hanging fruit started, maybe identify grant fundings and other, and other opportunities. So, again, that's not your question, it's more the city manager's question. What's the process on that? I frankly was under the impression that it would be an item for discussion tonight, but it's not on the agenda. So, how do we get it in front of the council for action?
See if I'm getting some feedback here, yeah. What's going with these microphones? Apologize for that. So, it's only full-time staff and a staffing allocation that requires council authorization, part-time staffing doesn't require to come to council, you know, with an action item. And we do, full-time staffing is part of our budget process in the spring. You know, if, if the council is desirous of going out and, you know, hiring a part-time person for this, that's something that we can take a look at doing. It becomes a question of what we want them to do, getting the right job classification, what are the other priorities that the council has for that sort of, that sort of level. So, you know, I imagine within the current budget, we'd have, you know, operational surpluses that could afford, you know, a part-time person at a lower level. It really depends on, you know, what are we wanting this person to do? The point of tonight's meeting is to give comments on the draft plan. Ultimately, it would come back for you, and you guys can decide whether we're even gonna adopt this plan, right? And so that's, that's not up for, you know, tonight's item, that is just something that'll be coming in the spring. So, you know, to the extent the council wants to change things at that point, you certainly can, you'll be able to adopt whatever plan you decide you want to adopt. You know, as far as bringing on part-time staff, again, it comes down to kind of what, what the council's interest is, what are the things this person would be doing. You know, we're hearing that there's all these pots of money, and in my experience, that isn't always true, it's sort of a fallacy, but if there are these pots of monies, it might be a task where this person could go and find that. So, you know, that's, that's an opportunity. Organizing thoughts, organizing plans and things like that is something they could do. If the council is wanting to do that before the adoption of this plan, or before the environmental work is done, that's one thing. If you're wanting to wait until this plan is done, that's another sort of task. So, no, it's, we're not, at this point, understanding the council wants to hire a full-time person, that would be a council authorization and a staffing allocation plan. So, it's part of, you know, what we're doing now, this plan's been under development for a while, and what the work plan for our sets has been is to kind of monitor this process, it's kind of yielded this joint session here, and then we're continuing to see it play out.
Commissioner Christian?
Hello? Okay, so, I have a question on the adoption of the plan, and would each jurisdiction be adopting its own plan, or does everybody have to adopt the one plan? If American Canyon wanted to say, yeah, we like these parts, but this doesn't really work for us, can American Canyon adopt a plan, but it may not be the same plan that all of the other jurisdictions adopted?
Yeah, I mean, there's no framework, Barry, that requires us to do any one particular thing, these plans aren't even required. So, you know, at the end of the day, we would have the ability to adopt whatever the council wanted to do. Now, there's a certain sensibility in a regional approach to having at least similar, if not identical, plans across the region, that's how you get the conformity that's, you know, desired. So, you know, I don't think we would want to be deviating far away from what others are doing, if there was some sensibility in the regional approach. But, you know, it does also kind of have to get into some of where the community priorities are, right? If the community priorities are around the actions that are in this plan, then we might adopt it. If the community priority isn't there, we might do a modified version of that, expressing our local priorities and what's important here. So, it's really up to the council as far as what they want to do.
And then, if we do that, does that affect the funding? Because are we attracting funding for this on a regional basis, and would that complicate the requests for funding? Do you know?
I think one of the advantages of having a regionally coordinated plan, that every jurisdiction hopefully adopts, even if they say, hey, we're adopting this, but we're basically adopting the measures that apply to us, right? That really shows very well with funders right now, both state agencies, as well as private capital, foundations. So it's better to go it together, and show a regionally coordinated that you're all aligned on some shared goals, on a larger geography like a county-wide basis. Is that always how it plays out? No. There are always opportunities for individual committees to get your own funding, to do your own unique things. But again, one of the advantages of a regionally coordinated plan, where everyone is moving together on a specific types of measures together, is that you can pull resources and overall reduce costs. And so that's one of the advantages, as we dig into that regionally coordinated implementation strategy, we're hoping that those opportunities really start to bubble up, where we're matching funding and financing opportunities with commitments that are shared, that funders find it.
Thank you. Councilmember Oral?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the great presentation, and thank you for your energy and all the work that you put into it. I can see that you, you've been at this for 13 years or so, so thank you for that. We recently received a letter from the North Bay Association of Realtors, and, you know, we do our best in the city of American Canyon to lead in environmental causes, we ban those gas stations, we have a zero-water footprint, we're protecting our open spaces and wetlands, making the environment a big part of the character of American Canyon. The hesitations that I've heard, I've had some hesitations, and I was unable to articulate these, and I apologize, I haven't actually read the report, so I've got like 16 days to like actually read the report and comment on it. But I've heard about electrification and removing natural gas out of homes, can you talk to me a little bit about that and what this plan calls for?
Yeah, I mean, it's a bold strategy, you know, if we're gonna get to carbon neutrality or 2045, and some of your community members in the region want to see that happen even faster, one of the main ways we do that in the building energy sector is to electrify as many homes and commercial buildings as we can. So that's the hard truth, is getting to carbon neutrality isn't about just planting a bunch of trees, it is about reducing emissions and getting rid of fossil fuel use as quickly as we can. We know that that's technically challenging and financially costly. So, some of the actions that we've put in the measures that do focus on retrofitting existing building, focus on things like education, making sure we have the workforce ready, making sure that the financing and funding or incentives that we have today that will sustain those into the future and scale those up, right? It's not a regulatory first approach necessarily, but there is some actions in the plan that call for reach codes, that may apply to existing buildings, when a property owner does something like an improvement to their property over a certain valuation threshold, that could be one way to introduce a reach code. There's also just time of replacement reach codes, when a piece of equipment fails, it's a great time to upgrade, right? And often your utilities are gonna offer rebates for you to do that. There's even controversial things, to your point about the Realtor letter about point of sale. We know Realtors don't like point of sale, because it slows down the crow's of escrow, but guess what? When you have 4% to 5% of property owners in most jurisdictions turning over every year, it's a great time to do an upgrade, because usually the home is vacant, it's gonna be vacated, it's a great time to go in and do some upgrades. Does it have to be done at point of sale? No. That's a policy decision that needs to be made by the, by the regional jurisdictions. And so there's some discussions on the table, we know that we're gonna have, about some of those potential regulatory triggers that you might want to use to make progress.
Thank you. And so, I'm a big advocate for building more housing in the state of California. And there's two Ps that come in my mind as I was coming into this meeting, planet and pocketbook. It's super expensive to live in the state of California, and every regulation that we do, and everything that we add on to environmental causes, a building code, a tax, adds more to the cost of housing in California. And it's just insane right now that you can get a starter home for $850,000, if you're lucky, in this Bay Area. What, what I'm worried about here is putting more costs on homeowners. Particularly, if we adopt this at this time, we're just adding to the cost. Insurance rates have gone up, and you could argue that's probably because of climate change. The insurance commissioner added more insurance, allowed insurance rates to go up because of these fires. You know, we've already done our part as a city to lead this, we're allowing no, there's no more, if you build a home here, you're not getting a front lawn, you're gonna get a, your yard will be drought tolerant, if you will. How much more burden can we put on homeowners?
I guess I would ask that to you all, as elected officials and appointed officials, is how, where do you think the limits are? I mean, we've got climate commitments and resolution from all six jurisdictions, we've got a lot of regulatory pressure to continue to mitigate emissions, and the question is how. We know it's not an easy set of choices, so I guess, you know, we've got actions in our retrofitting measures in the plan to help to offset those growing costs. Some folks might even argue that they might place higher value on a home that's been retrofitted and electrified and has green building materials in it, and they might choose that over an older home that never really had any upgrades and is still using dirty gas, which is bad for public health indoors, you know, fossil fuel combustion indoors. There are studies that are being revealed now that reveal, that that actually hurts people, and it shortens their life. So, we can't necessarily quantify that on a homeowner pocketbook basis, but the public sector pays for health issues, right? So getting, having cleaner, healthier buildings with lower operating costs actually might be a good policy decision. Folks may not want to hear it now, but in the long run, they may, they may buy in.
Yeah, but you know, if this was akin to the gasoline issue, right? So, you know, we want to move to electrification. But even now, the state of California and the governor's office is looking at, like, let's drill a little bit more oil, because you know what? Climate leadership is not $10 a gallon for gasoline, it's just not, right? Climate leadership is not $100, $1.6 million for a starter home, because I had to electrify it, and had to rebuild it, or had to change something because of point of sale. I bring this up because there are pragmatic ways that we could go about attacking climate change. But we can't put everything on a homeowner, or a young family, or an elderly person, or somebody moving, to try to move into someplace. And I would caution us as policymakers, as staff, as citizens, that we have to really, really, really think about that. Because these goals are ambitious, and some of these, what's in this plan, and what could come out of here, could end up being a backlash to some of our goals, to where people aren't adopting it. So be very careful. I'll read that comment, I'll read the report, and I'll provide my comments, but if you want to hear where I'm coming from, that's where I'm coming from. Because we just can't, there's enough on our plate, prices are going up, things are going up, regulations are going up, just pull it back, right? There's other things that we can do, right? We can redo recycled water, we can put no lawns in, we could find other ways that other people can pay for it. But I'll tell you right now, the American citizen, the people in our community are stretched thin.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
I just want to push back a little bit and point out that not all of these costs fall on the homeowners or on the Realtors, and that some of them are actually financially lucrative. And I will use my house as a case in point. Five years ago, we had solar cells with a battery backup, we run about 200 a month for the lease on that system. I'm pretty sure that if we didn't, and we were using, you know... Um, I'm pretty sure that if we didn't and we were using, you know, electricity from PG&E, we'd be at 500 or 600 a month. So my, you know, I look at it and say, we are saving money. And if we sold our house, one of the pitches is going to be, this has got solar, battery backup, you know, your utility bill is 200 a month instead of five or six, you know, and I'm going to try to add a few thousand more to the house kind of thing. But the point being that a lot of these improvements actually will save the homeowner on their operating costs and, and you get a side benefit of improving the, the planet. So, you know, I think Realtors as a general rule freak out anytime it's going to make it tougher for them to sell homes. This isn't the most exciting time to be selling homes with interest rates and so forth. But this is also a long-term plan. And in five or six years, when rates are a little lower, you know, and the market's a little more exciting, people will probably regret that they didn't take advantage of some of the things that we're talking about today. So all in moderation, I guess, is the point I would make.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Thank you. I'd just like to piggyback on what Councilmember Ora was speaking about. Um, I'm a single person. I work for the county of Napa, so I'm not a millionaire, not even close. My house is 31 years original. I'm the, you know, I'm the original owner. I, I haven't had a new roof. I need a new roof. And I feel a lot of pressure as a leader of the community and in being on climate action. I can't afford to get a new roof and now solar, the credit's going away. So I'm just, I'm out of luck. And so what do you advise for people like me? I mean, I don't have an electric car. I have a Honda Pilot. I had to buy it during COVID. I did buy an e-bike because the county of Napa won't give me an electric car to use down here. So I figure I can e-bike my way around here. Um, so I'm trying to do as much as I can, but in the big scheme of things, I can't afford to get a new roof and, and get solar on it within the next five years. So like, what do you recommend for people like me and a lot of people in the community where we're just barely getting by?
Yeah. Our cap actually has a lot of actions and measures that provide options for all people in walks of life, low income, folks from very difficult backgrounds, folks that are renters, folks that are wealthy homeowners. Everyone kind of can probably find their place in some of these measures and actions. Um, you know, that clean and efficient building energy use, you know, being green starts with efficiency. It's not necessarily electrification or solar or batteries or things that are expensive. Very small steps can be taken at home, that low hanging fruit to really reduce your carbon footprint. And so, you know, everything starts with efficiency and conservation and then we build from there. We build on electrification. We build on solar. Not everyone needs solar. You all have MCE, one of the most progressive community choice aggregation, uh, utility partners in the country, um, who's giving you a fairly great baseline rate of pretty great darn green energy. Yeah, you can pay to upgrade to deep green, but, and that's actually fairly cost attainable to say, oh, I actually have 100% clean electricity use in my home because I decided to make that small payment. So, you know, those sort of choices are at everyone's disposal and a lot of people just don't know. They haven't taken the time. And so maybe you have and maybe others in the community or in the room have. But I think there are simple steps that anyone can take to get on the path and everyone's in a different place. And I think the cap, our cap recognizes that. But it doesn't shy away from those harder actions that we need to take. If we're really going to get to carbon neutrality and we're serious, as soon as possible, we're being told by all the elected bodies in the region, we're going to have to make hard choices about things like getting gas out of buildings and that's, that's the hard part. So, yeah.
I would like to also add that I haven't had a working heater in three years and yet my PG&E bill is ridiculous and we barely use our lights. So it's just the common everyday person that we're struggling to make ends meet and like how, we need, I guess, education and, and resources. Like where do we, how can we find that extra money?
Yeah.
Basically, yeah.
Yeah, and I appreciate the discussion earlier about staffing needs. I mean, I think one of the most effective ways that we see climate action implementation be successful is getting bodies in the community, doing the organizing work, partnering with community-based organization, neighborhood associations, block groups. That's where it changed, that's where the change happens because people learn from each other. And they say, oh, how'd you get, how'd you get your water heater mostly paid for? Oh, I got this rebate. That's how that sticky behavior and that communication neighbor to neighbor is so important. So, you know, there's measures and actions in the plan that kind of point folks, point us all collectively in that direction of really creating community connectedness and education and letting, letting the community do some of the work as well.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job, Eric, for answering these questions. Uh, we're going to open it now to public comment for anyone that has, uh, oh, Commissioner Christian.
Just one thing I noticed in your graph was that the, the GHGs were falling anyway and, and that with the R cap, the plan would, would fall quicker. But from my point of view, if, to me, the most important thing is that we're going in the right direction. So the time limits, 2035 and 2045, I know they matter, but they might not matter as much to me if it means forcing people to electrify their houses and buy, put a new roof on and solar and all that. My preference would be that if we're going in the right direction, I would play with the, the deadlines rather than use the hard, hard push and go more with the carrot rather than the stick, if that were possible. So, I don't know, can you speak to that?
Yeah, certainly it is a mix of carrots and sticks in the plan now. Um, one theory is, yeah, take away all the sticks because it's not, it's too much pain for the community. Um, we hear that a lot and I think that's something, that's a trade-off. That's a policy question on the table is it, is now the time, you know, to Councilmember Ora's point, other points made already, is now is the time to tighten the screws and really move faster? Or do we need to wait for technology to change or more funding to become available? So I think these are very real choices that need to be made and considerations of, of this plan.
Is the 2045 deadline for you a hard, a hard stop?
Um, one of the reasons we chose consistency with the state's target is this plan has been scoped to be a qualified plan for the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions as defined by the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA. And the idea of beside of creating this plan to that level of detail and to be consistent with the state's target is so that we can actually provide CEQA relief. If a project comes along and says, I need to mitigate emissions, how am I going to do it? Well, we've got a checklist, it is an appendix to the plan, by the way, that if you do these measures, you're less than significant in CEQA. You would show how you're consistent with the plan. In order to do that, you need to set up a pretty rigorous greenhouse gas accounting framework, set of forecast targets and quantifiable measures that are quantifiable down to the project level. That's what's in this plan as well, in addition to all the important community work that we did. So when we talk about a CEQA qualified greenhouse gas reduction plan, we do, actually do need to show that we have a quantified pathway to get down to these targets that are aligned with the state's goals. If we don't do that, we kick the can out to 2100, your CEQA qualified cap falls apart. And there's case law in California that demonstrates that's the case. I won't go into the weeds on that, but just know that holding the line and maintaining consistency with the state's goals and pervert, preserving the ability of staff across jurisdictions and elected bodies to use these plans to provide clarity for CEQA review for projects that you want to see happen is something to keep in mind as we think about those trade-offs.
Thank you. Commissioner Hilton Horton.
Um, I had a question. I saw PG&E's logo on, on the screen earlier. Um, so they've been a part of these discussions, right? However, they just, um, installed a new pipeline under the Napa River, a larger one, like projecting more gas use in the future. Um, how, have there been conversations around that?
Uh, we didn't get involved in any of those. From my perspective, I don't know if staff at the county or others have been talking with PG&E about that project, but that's notable.
That's it? Oh, any other questions from council or commission?
So going back to the video that, uh, we watched where you addressed the supervisors and there were different comments that were presented. One was from, um, Mr. Wilson, I believe, who was the grandfather who was very adamant about how, you know, he believes that we are indeed very much already behind and wanted to push our deadline from 2045 to 2030. And I tend to agree with him and also Supervisor Manfree who stated that if we cannot make, you know, the goal at 2030, then, um, maybe we should look at 2031 and then if we can make it there, 2032. In other words, you know, it's better, um, to keep looking at the next year and try to pull it so that we can meet these goals. So I think that basically we need a lot of incentives for, uh, citizens and for businesses as well within American Canyon. Um, I, I believe with that we must look within, um, and within ourselves and our California government because right now I don't think that, and this is also going back to what one of the supervisors stated, can't really depend on the federal government right now to assist us in this. And so looking within, I think that, you know, we have the power as a community with education and with a lot of advocacy to move forward in the direction and not make 2045 perhaps the goal. And also looking at that we don't want to, you know, dump everything upon, you know, the homeowner and increasing that. But also with education, the homeowner can educate themselves and looking at government grants and how, you know, this is going to offset the cost because a lot of people just don't know what they do not know. And so I think that, um, as we go forward, you know, American Canyon is growing and we have to look at basically what we can do with policy and also as just individual citizens, you know, human behaviors. Um, I've been recycling since I was 20 years old when no one else was really like, what are you doing? Recycling, reusing, re, you know, just putting things in different places that, you know, finding another home for something rather than putting it in the garbage. So I think that, um, basically going forward, that American Canyon is growing and we are a pivotal contributor to the county of Napa, pivotal. We are the gateway and personally I believe that we are a protector and leader for the rest of the county. And, um, I think that we should be seen and respected as such. And so that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Once again, anybody for council? Vice Mayor.
Just to follow up on that, and I agree with everything she's, Debbie said, or Commissioner Xavier, I, sorry about your last name, I can't pronounce it. I agree with you and I will go back and I guess we'll ask the council to put this on the next agenda is to address the, the staffing issue because frankly, none of this gets done without somebody assigned to doing it. That's the one thing I've learned over the probably 40 years of being in government is if you don't have a warm body assigned to something, it doesn't get done. We talk a lot. We try to brag about whatever we say we do or have done, but you need somebody on the floor doing the work. And so I would ask this council, that I would like to bring it back at our next meeting so that we can give direction to the staff as to whether we want a part-time position, you know? And I say part-time because I'm a finance guy and I don't feel like taking on a full-time cost. But I do think there's some resources, almost proof of concept, that a person working at the program coordinator level, working with homes, working with community groups, like Eric was saying, that we may discover that we can get a lot more done and be far more successful with a part-time person just assigned to doing that. And if it is incredibly successful, then sure, maybe it does justify a full-time. But I would like the council to at least provide direction to staff on that part-time assignment and whether or not there's some benefit to that or not. So that would be my request, even though there isn't a part about future agenda items, I would throw that out as a future agenda item and preferably at the next meeting.
Councilmember Oral.
I would prefer to wait until we adopt this, uh, R cap and see what happens and see what comes out of that. And that way we can make a decision whether we want to announce. I don't think it's a priority that we have to have that at this certain council meeting right now. So, um, I'm, I'm open to entertaining it. I don't think the urgency is needed right now and we're still in the process of open comments and reviews.
I appreciate that, but by the same token, we've tasked OSATs with dealing with the low hanging fruit for two years now and they haven't done much in large part because there's nobody there to do anything about low hanging fruit. So that's why I think there's a certain sense of urgency. And I, I agree that we could wait till this plan is adopted, but the low hanging fruit already exists. This plan doesn't, doesn't need to be adopted to say educate the public on retrofitting your house or exploring ways of, of electrifying your home or solar energy or, or any of the other things that are low hanging fruit. All of that's known, all of that's out there available. It doesn't require a massive R cap plan to do that. It just requires somebody to go knock on doors and do the heavy work that, that it needs to be done. So, you know, I'll defer to the council, but I will tell you this, two years from now, if we don't provide any staffing, we're going to be in the same boat, trying to brag about how we do this or we got rid of gas stations or whatever, and we really won't have a whole lot of specifics to show for it. And that's on us.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting comment, given the leadership that we've had in Napa County on environmental stuff, right? And so I still don't see the urgency for that. And I, if that were to come forward, I, I would say that we could wait.
Okay, with that said, I want to try to open up a public comment. If we have anybody from the public that wishes to have a comment on item number one, you're free to do so now.
I have, I have a hand raised online if we're ready for that.
Good evening, Mayor Washington, Councilmembers.
Sorry, it's Kate Bit on the line. Go ahead, Kate.
Good evening, Mayor Washington, Councilmembers and Commissioners. My name is Catherine Bit. I'm a senior at American Canyon High School, the Associated Student Body Vice President and Co-President of Napa Schools for Climate Action. As our city leadership and officials progress in outlining the future of American Canyon, please remember that now, more than ever, it is critical to continue your strong climate leadership. Young people are especially vulnerable to climate breakdown and please remain true to your commitment to restore a safe and healthy climate for us while there is still time. The Napa Schools for Climate Action Team and I have previously communicated with both the American Canyon Planning Commission and the American Canyon City Council about our concerns as the youth of our city. I want to thank you for the recognition, action and collaboration we've received. We especially appreciate your approving of our new general plan, which, like the city of Napa before us, commits to achieving the same 2030 net zero goal as the Napa Valley Unified School District. Thankfully, our new general plan is clear on the level of ambition the science demands. And from the general plan, I quote, "Environment 9.2 intergovernmental cooperation. Work with Napa County jurisdictions together with community organizations, businesses, schools and regional partners and jurisdictions to educate, mobilize, expand and accelerate local, regional and statewide support for comprehensive, immediate and sustained action to achieve its goal of net zero climate pollution by or before 2030." This level of commitment and support does not go unrecognized and is greatly appreciated by me, our Napa Schools for Climate Action Team and all of the rising generation as our city's leadership exceptionally recognizes youth voices and takes the threat of the climate emergency seriously. Napa Schools for Climate Action, a student-led advocacy group that promotes climate justice with participation from capable and passionate students across high schools countywide, would be more than happy to provide assistance to the city council and the OSATs commission to expedite the emergency level climate action we need right now more than ever. Thank you all for your continued support.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you. I have another, I have another. Okay, I'm going to call Justin Hamilton-Hole. Go ahead, Justin.
Hey, good, good evening, Mayor, Council. I want to follow, I'm a, so, I'm going to make a little comment, okay? I was on Zoom this week with Sarah Club and she had good voices and she's a very good worker and good dude in American High School. So I might say, open space, uh, good, uh, and good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
I have no other hands raised online.
Okay, now, anyone else inside the, the chamber that would like to make public comment? Seeing none, I'll return back to the council and the commissioners for final statements or questions. and/or if there's a motion that someone wants to make, starting with the commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner McClinton Horton. Any other commissioners? Seeing none, I'll come to the council. Any closing statements, questions or motion? This is a item that we're just reporting filing, however. Vice Mayor, you made a comment about making a motion.
Okay, well, I'll go through the process and see where we end up. I'll make a motion that we add to the agenda, the next agenda, some discussion on whether or not to proceed with a part-time staffing position to assist with some of the low hanging fruit of climate action.
A second. Sorry. We have a second, can we get a roll call, please?
Who is the second?
You've been Melissa.
Chris.
Ty.
So let's see here. Councilmember Brando Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Yes.
Councilmember Ora.
No.
And Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
And Mayor Washington.
Before I answer that question, I'd like to ask the commissioners what they think. You are our advisors, you are the ones that need to be telling us what you researched in the past, you know, what Eric has done for you and how are you feeling and what would you advise?
Should I just call their vote?
I'm just, I'm, before I make my vote, I just want to get their opinion.
Regarding, hello, yeah. Regarding the low hanging fruit, I think what came out of all of our discussions about the role of OSATs, there was, I, I perceived a push for us to be more like a deliberative body rather than being the people that went out and did the work. And maybe it was different with the OSAC committee where we would go out and have open day at Newell to try to get interest in having public access. Now it seemed like our, our role, what you wanted from us was to be more like, make the decisions. And as far as the low hanging fruit, then it's not for us to be going out and knocking on doors and encouraging people to do that. So I think a coordinator would be really helpful in that regard. And, and I, I appreciate councilmember Ora's position that wait and see. So I'm, I'm in the middle of it and you guys are going to have to deal with that, sorry. But, but as far as the low hanging fruit, it, it kind of wasn't our job, maybe. It was just, I think we would have liked to, but, but we're, that wasn't really the direction that I took from you. And so a coordinator would be necessary in that regard if that's what you want to accomplish.
Thank you, that's fair. Commissioner Debbie.
Yes, I agree. And I am also very cognizant of what councilmember Ora has stated. But what councilmember Vice Mayor Joseph pointed out, that in two years, if we are still in the same position that we are in now, that's a really big concern to me. So I agree that we should look for someone to fill that role for the low hanging fruit.
Thank you. Commissioner McClinton Horton?
Yeah, I agree, I don't think we kind of are in a position to put a price tag on the house. The vote for the money will come later, but we need to make a little change. And I like the idea of maybe seeing a capital on the bike for that part-time job for the baseball student.
Oh, Kate. I also admire Kate and her sister, who was previous to her, that helped us with the gas station moratorium. So I will vote yes. Thank you. Thank you. We were going to go back into closed session, but obviously now at 9:30, I think it would be better for us to reschedule that last part of that closed session, Mr. Holly, for a later date, next city council meeting perhaps, October 7. But I would take a vote if, with everybody, it's 30 minutes before 10. And I would like to open it up to see if you guys want to continue with the closed session after this or if you agree that we should continue the closed session. And I will start with Vice Mayor Joseph.
As much of a glutton for punishment as I am, I'd still go for waiting until two weeks.
Three weeks, October 7.
Or three weeks.
Three weeks. Councilmember Ora.
Oh, I made my vote over there, I was like, no, we're not going to make it. So I'll wait till October 7, yeah.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Yes, we can wait.
And Councilmember Cruz.
Yes, please, let's wait.
And I will join you guys on waiting. Well, with that in mind, we have concluded our business for this evening. We are adjourned. Good night, American Canyon.